I'm going to call us the boarder for our board workshop. It's law after four. I'm going to turn it over to Laura.
You want to go for a roll call?
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Trustee Baker.
She has no she'll be coming in a bit late.
Trustee Baldini.
Here.
Trustee Goff.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee, student trustee Kawaja.
Here.
Trustee Segura.
Here.
And trustee Iverson.
Here.
Did I miss trustee Dodd? I'm so sorry, you're here too.
Okay, thank you.
Where's all you?
It's on me?
It's on you.
Awesome. Well, Happy New Year, everyone. It's lovely to see you all. I just had the pleasure of introducing myself to trustee Goff, trustee Dodd. Also, I'm very pleased to meet you. The rest of you are familiar faces and it's lovely to see you. This is your annual Brown Act training. We, I have sat with you and talked about the Brown Act on other occasions. So some of this will sound familiar, but for those of you that it is to whom it's familiar, I will remind you, I am a Brown Act expert. Every time I get a Brown Act question, I open the Brown Act. And refreshing and relearning and remembering is also very important. And it's wonderful for the trustees to all hear this information together. So everyone is hearing the same things, hearing each other's questions or concerns as they may come up. And that's part of you coming together as a new board in this new year. So it's wonderful that all of you are here and trustee Baker will be joining us in a minute. A quick explanation about the title of this presentation. Several years ago, I was one of a group of presenters that was presenting to a board of trustees. And so I got to hear how other presenters were talking before it came to me. And it sounded like an hour-long scolding session. And I realized, ew, that's kind of the way I sound. And that really the way we need to present board training is in a way that makes operational sense, rather than just rattle off a bunch of rules. To put your legal obligations into the context of how to help you be as productive a board as possible and to help you reach your goal, your goals as a board. And so I shifted my, all of my trainings, I've also done other types of governance training with this board. But the Brown Act training is really going to be about how to hold a productive business meeting that also complies with the Brown Act. So that you're, it's not just how to comply with the Brown Act and follow a bunch of rules, but how do you have a productive meeting that complies with the Brown Act? And I do mean complies with it both technically and in terms of the spirit of the Act. This is not about how to avoid the principles of the Brown Act, but how to comply in ways that also allow you to be highly productive as a board. So that's sort of the framework for this training. Three overarching principles. Number one, the Brown Act is about transparency, that you do your work under the scrutiny of the public. And that's one of the two key principles of the Brown Act. The second is public access to your meetings and public participation. The public participation part, which I will talk about a little bit more later, derives, in fact, from the Education Code. So some of your governance obligations come from the Brown Act, some of them come from the Education Code itself. Unlike other governing bodies in the state of California, the, your constituents and public have the right to place things on your agendas. And so we'll talk about that in a minute. That has to do with the Ed Code, not the Brown Act. But then, as I said, we're going to talk about this within the context of a business meeting. The idea being that you, for the most part, get one day a month to advance the business of the district. And that's sort of what the Brown Act, that's the burden the Brown Act places upon you, that you can't just all get together in between meetings and figure out what to do. So how do we make those meetings as useful and productive as possible? The presumption is that government business is conducted in the open, subject to limited exceptions. So we will talk about when are you allowed to go into closed session, but those exceptions are read narrowly. The assumption is that you are conducting your business in the public. The well-known quote from Ralph M. Brown, who was the author of the Brown Act, is "The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know." Okay? And so the expectation, for the most part, is that you're doing your work under the public eye. You'll see a slide a little bit later, but I'll remind you of it now. Most of you have heard me say this before. If you've got something that's controversial and uncomfortable and difficult, and so you wish you could talk about it in closed session, that's a pretty good indicator that you have to talk about it in an open session. Right? The Brown Act isn't here to force you to do employee of the month in open session. Right? It's here to ensure that the controversial, difficult, hard work that you do is done under the eye of the public. So I want to flag right at the beginning, we're talking about transparency, some new developments in the law. We continue to see fallout from the City of Bell and we will for years to come. In terms of transparency. And this most recent piece came out in 2016, but I continue to get questions from districts that feel very challenged by this requirement. And this is, oh, hold on.
Fast forward several slides.
Sorry, I hit, I hit, I was a little too heavy on my, how did that happen? All I hit was down. I must have hit a funny button. Okay. So the, this, this, this was in 2016, but I still get districts that feel challenged by this. This is the requirement that a legislative body must orally report in open session the recommendations regarding compensation for all local agency executives. Compensation including both salary and benefits. There must be an oral report on compensation before you act on an executive contract. Okay? This is a new piece of legislation. The particular challenge for districts around this is that, as with many pieces of legislation that you struggle with, they were written with a legislature clearly not having in mind its impact on a community college district, but it's written to apply to you anyway. So in a city or a county, for example, the individuals that fall under the category "local agency executive" is relatively small. It is the chief executive and their direct reports, essentially. And the head of any department. Head of any department means that suddenly you have a much larger group of folks that this would cover. We think it includes, for example, deans. Right? Now, ask your HR professionals, how do we enact, adopt contracts for deans and other mid-level administrators in community colleges on a consent calendar? And you can't really do a consent calendar and individual oral reports on compensation. And that has, that's sort of where the challenge has come with how to administer the statute in the, in the community colleges. Some districts have handled this by pulling all of these off their consent calendars and doing them individually. Other districts, in particular larger districts where you might have 25 or more in a, in a, in a meeting, is they will do an oral report on the entire consent calendar, all positions, and then move forward with a consent calendar. But that's one of the challenges around this new statute. Now, interestingly, this was enacted in 2016 after two other changes were made. Okay, so something is happening. Okay, I'm just make, I think I'm just pushing the wrong button. I'm technically challenged. So this came into play after two other pieces of legislation that you're more familiar with, also came into play to force more transparency around how we compensate our executives. Again, all of this City of Bell fallout. So this, in addition to the oral report, governing boards are prohibited from calling special meetings to approve local agency contract, executive contracts. So we can't decide, okay, this is what we'll do. We'll adopt the contract at Sun, on Sunday, you know, at 8:00 AM during a special meeting. It has to be during a regular meeting and it must be during open session. So the evolution of the statutes were, okay, no more adoption of contracts in closed session. I still see mistakes around this. You actually can't even discuss compensation in closed session for an executive unless it's because you're implementing a disciplinary demotion. But what can the district afford? How much should we paying this position? How much is this position valued? Where should the compensation be in comparison to other employees? None of that is a closed session discussion. Right? So compensation is done under the bright light of public scrutiny. And it must be done, and then in addition to that, the legislature said, and don't think you can avoid public scrutiny by doing it in an open special meeting that you hold at 6:00 AM on Sundays. It must be during a regular meeting. So short is, short answer is, is that when you are treating or addressing the compensation of your executive personnel, it is being done in a regular public session openly and with very transparent disclosure around compensation through the oral report. Any questions about that? Okay. So that's the latest on this transparency piece. We'll come back to transparency again when we look more closely at when are you actually permitted to go into closed session and avoid the transparency. So let's turn now to the other, the two key concepts, which is the idea of public access to your meetings. As I mentioned briefly, public access is regulated for community colleges not only by the Brown Act, but the Education Code. And here, here's what the public's rights are. The public has the right to, the agenda being timely posted, so the public knows what you plan to be talking about at a meeting, so that they can decide whether they want to come, observe the deliberations, present public comment, et cetera. So the information on the agenda has to be sufficient for the public to be able to make that, that judgment. So there, it doesn't have to be a treatise, but there's to be enough information in the agenda about the item, so members of the public can make an informed decision about whether they wish to attend. They have the right to attend meetings, record and broadcast meetings, inspect documents and recordings that are both generated by the meeting and are prepared in anticipation of the open session portion of the meeting. They have the right to address the board on agendized items, and this is the language from this statute, as such items are taken up. What does that mean? It means that wherever you choose to put public comment on the agenda with regard to your, your agendized items, it must be before you take action. So minimally, you must offer public comment before you adjourn to closed session, because the public has the right to comment on your closed session agenda before you take up that agenda. So it is a Brown Act violation not to offer public comment before you adjourn to closed session. And then you have to offer public comment on your other publicly agendized items. And different districts do that in different ways. Some districts offer one opportunity for public comment at the very beginning of the meeting. Anybody who wants to say anything about anything on the agenda comes up at that point, and then the board moves through their agenda. Other districts prefer to ask for public comment as each particular item comes up or each particular action item. Okay? There's not a right or a wrong way. That happens, that is just how you want to run your business meeting, just so long as the public comment occurs before you deliberate and take action on an item. The board, the public also has the right to address you on any matter within your jurisdiction. That means there's a third type of public comment you have to make available to your public. That's the right to speak to you about anything within your jurisdiction, whether it's on the agenda or not. I want to talk to you about the state of your facilities. It's not on your agenda. There has to be a point in the meeting, a regular meeting, when I get to get up and I get to talk to you about that. Yes?
Hi Laura. I'm going to speak then, this gets a little louder. I'd like to hear you talk a little bit, or reinforce, the, the agenda's posted, there's a description that makes sense. We've had some members from the community say, you must attach any information that you're going to be going over prior to, so then we would have the ability to see it, et cetera.
Okay, so we'll get to, I'll have that in just a minute, but let me, I'm happy to respond to questions as they come up. I think that makes sense. So the, the rule around documents is this, the public portion of the board packet, whatever is provided to the trustees, must be provided to the public, generally at the same time and certainly 72 hours before the meeting. Now, what that doesn't mean is that it's a violate, it, it, well, let me not speak in double negatives. It is not a violation of the Brown Act to walk into a board meeting and hand trustees an item for the first time. So the rule isn't, any document that the board's going to use has to be created at least 72 hours beforehand. It means that if it is made part of the packet, it must be made available to the public at the same time.
Okay.
Right? So for example, if I had not provided Catherine with my PowerPoint presentation in advance and came running in, having just finished it, I wouldn't be pre, I could still give the presentation. We would just make the presentation available to the public now or within 24 hours. A caveat, and I'm going to mention it now because I'm afraid I'll forget it, because I'll skip this when I get to it on my slides and it's in my notes. Even though the public portion of the board packet is something that under the Brown Act, the public is entitled to receive, it should be received by the district, not by you as individual trustees. When you receive a board packet, open component and closed component, you should treat that as for your eyes only. And allow the district administering and managing the communication of the public to determine which is the appropriate portion to post, and they will take care of the posting. So when you get a packet, that's just for you. Okay? And this, of course, is a way to protect against inadvertent leaks of, disclosure of classified closed session information. And also, there may be issues around timing, where the district has felt that certain things should be released at certain times, and they want to control that. Okay. Any other questions about this slide, please, trustee Dodd?
About public comment, we have, you said there's different procedures for different boards, so depending on however they want to do it. Say, there's a general procedure where they have an open public comment at the beginning to introduce the meeting, but to approve a certain item, there's no specific public comment for that. Is that a potential, obviously it's an issue possibly, but is the idea that you had public comment before you took action on this certain item, where there was no public comment for this specific agenda item, is that?
That, that's right. I, where, where, in districts that take public comment as each item comes up, what I don't see is an agenda that says, "Action item, adoption of contract with Architect Smith."
Sure.
And then underneath it, it doesn't say, "Public comment on the action item, deliberation on the action item," right? It will just state the action item, and then your board president will know how to run the item. So if, if you haven't required everyone to speak on that item at the very beginning of the meeting, your board president would say, "We've now turned to item 7.0 on the, on the agenda. Is there any public comment?" Take public comment. Or if you're, if you're a district that utilizes cards, you would turn to your board secretary and say, "Did we receive any cards for comment on this item?" You might have then turned to the public and say, "Did anyone wish to speak on this that failed to turn in a card?"
Yeah, I guess the question was more, so let's say we just make a mistake, for whatever reason, we don't offer public comment, but yet you had a public comment, introductory public comment to begin with, speaking on any matter, I guess, of concern. That's probably an issue.
I would, the reason I would be worried about that, and these are, these are, these can be minor and correctable violations, I would not call that an egregious mistake. But if I'm a member of the public that has a burning issue with the contract with Architect Smith, I'm not standing up and speaking on general public comment, because that's for items that are not on the agenda, and I know my chance will come when the item comes up.
Yeah, no, I understand. Thanks.
Yeah. The public also has the right, and this is the extra little piece that the Ed Code has added, to place items directly on your agenda. This is not something that you will see in a city council or any other public governing body in California. This is unique to the Education Code. Here are the parameters, though, that will be, can be utilized by your board president and your superintendent president as they build agendas, is they receive a request from the public to have something placed on the agenda. They can, number one, determine whether or not it relates to community college business. I cannot demand that you discuss U.S. foreign policy. Right? So it has to be a matter related to the business of the district. And I have gotten questions around that, on things, whether they are too tangential or not, and whether you have to take them up on the agenda. The other is, it does not confer the right to place it on the current agenda or a specific agenda. So what I don't get to do is say, "I want this on next month's agenda." So the, what you have to, this is now where we get into the land of ensuring that you are following the spirit of the Act as well as the technical requirements of the Act. I would be concerned if, if it was a sticky, difficult issue, so you said, "Fine, we'll put it on the agenda in 2020." And then you have to use good faith. But it's reasonable to say, "Well, let's look at the next agenda. It's extremely full. We're going to put it over." Or, and I've seen this happen, "Oh, they want us to discuss X. We actually have a whole meeting planned to look at that in three months from now. We are going to have a, we've requested a staff report on the issue, or we're holding a public hearing on the issue, or we know that we are going to have more information at that time, so we're going to wait and move the public's request to that meeting because it will be a more coherent way to look at the issue." I think that's completely appropriate as well. And, and this goes to this underlying theme that will, I will focus on more directly in a few slides, and that is, how are you complying with the Brown Act in ways that help you to be efficient and productive? And if you see a, a, a member of the public requesting discussion of an item that you are already planning to address in the spring or at another time, I think it's fine to move it over to that time period. Okay? No, okay. So in order to comply with the Brown Act, it's important to understand what a meeting is, because that's what the Brown Act regulates, is meetings. It doesn't regulate other types of communications. So sometimes when I get questions from districts, because they're, they need to have a communication with trustees and are worried about how to do that and not violate the Brown Act, they've forgotten that they can send a letter out to trustees. They can send an email out to trustees. You have to make sure you do it in a way that the trustees aren't all seeing each other's responses and communications, and you don't become a conduit for a serial meeting. But written communications are not regulated by the Brown Act. Meetings are regulated by the Brown Act. Okay? So what is a meeting? A meeting is a congregation of a majority of the governing body. So that's the first part of it. If it's less than a majority, it is not regulated by the Brown Act. And then you're in the same time and place, right? So same time and place can be both physically in the same room, same time and place can be through a conference call. That would constitute same, you don't get over, around the Brown Act by saying, "Well, we just won't all be in the same place. We'll just all dial in." No, that would be same time and place, to hear, discuss, or deliberate on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Once you are in that land, you're covered by the Brown Act, and you have to follow its posting and notice and disclosure and transparency requirements. Now, what will not be a meeting is the attendance of a majority of the board at social events or community meetings, as long as you don't discuss district business. So if a majority, you suddenly discover you're all, you all were invited to the same cocktail party, you don't have to draw straws to see who leaves. Here's the challenge, though, and this is just sort of a part of your own, you know, internal ethical compass that you bring to the work you do. It is very tempting when you see a bunch of your colleagues at Denny's to say, "What are we going to do about X?" Because you have so little time to manage these issues, and there you all are together. That is a violation of the Brown Act, and a serious one. So when you are together at the CCLC conference, that's fine. You can all go to the same sessions. You can go to social events together, but you have to exercise that internal discipline not to use it as an opportunity to move along the business of the district. That's, that's the part that's a little bit challenging.
Laura, I have a quick question.
Yes, of course.
This is, I'm going to tell a little anecdote, just to kind of set it up. I used to be an executive working for a board and the, that was subject to the Brown Act. And one time I got my hands slapped for, after we'd adjourned, because we had, one of the things that we had decided on was we needed to hold a special meeting. And after we adjourned, as we were walking out, we were chatting about what would be a good day to have that special meeting. And I was told, no, that's a violation of the Brown Act to have that conversation, which felt really weird to me. Is that your take on it as well?
I think-
Mostly I just want vindication.
I, I think that it is, it is a technical violation that no district attorney would care about. Okay, or there's, or the Attorney General. I mean, there's also, an analogy would be, I have gotten complaints because during closed session, somebody shared information about their daughter's graduation or dates or appropriate dates for a meeting, and it wasn't on the agenda. And small, very brief administrative items in closed session that are not action-oriented are not going to be considered violations. So I would sort of consider that in the same category. Better practice would have been to have remembered to do it before everybody adjourned, but I am not going to lose sleep over that. Right? I lose more sleep over the things that are not technical violations, but that I think are ethical, you know, I know ethics are not considered the expertise of lawyers, but that I believe violate the spirit of the Act. And I actually just had a very uncomfortable conversation with a CEO that was going to shoehorn, we'll talk about overuse of closed session. And probably the most overused is CEO evaluation. And the CEO said, "We're going to go in and we're going to talk about this and this and this." I said, "That's, that's just not a subject to closed session." He goes, "It's under my evaluation." And I was like, "I really don't think it is." So I'm more worried about those things, quite frankly. Okay. So we've talked about sort of generally what a meeting is and what a meeting is not. And with that in mind, we have to make sure that you avoid what we call a serial meeting. And that is that you have a communication that comes to include a majority through a series of meetings, you know, the game, the game of telephone, where trustee A talks to trustee B, who talks to trustee C, who talks to trustee D. You now have four trustees on a seven-member board, and that is going to be a violation. This applies on any discussion that involves hearing, discussing, or deliberating on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the district. And I'm reminding those of you who are seasoned elected officials, that this is different from the way the law was when you first started your work. It used to be, under the Brown Act, that it was only prohibited if it was for the purpose of developing a collective concurrence. I'm lobbying my other members, so we'll all agree and come to an agreement before we come to the meeting. That is not required anymore, and it hasn't been required for a number of years. So just a discussion of, of an item, or even something that's within your jurisdiction that comes- that comes to include more than three trustees, will end up being a violation of the Brown Act. Yes?
For our new trustees, can you touch on CEOs' multiple combination, you know, me meeting with each, each person, just for-
So I, can I, if you'll bear with me, and I'm, the only reason I'm being a little more rigid is, I, I'm sensitive to time, and I'm, when I get to, I have a whole page just on administrator communications.
Great, great.
I will absolutely get to that in just a minute. The public, so we're still sort of talking about all the ways the public has access, and that, and part of the way is all of these rules that make sure that you are doing your work at publicly noticed meetings and not, and not behind closed doors. And that includes this prohibition against serial meetings. And then there's also the right to inspect documents, and this is what you had already asked about, and we discussed, that the open session backup documents have to be made available to the public, when they are made available to the trustees. If they are made available to trustees less than 72 hours prior, then you make them available as they become available to the board. And as I said earlier, this doesn't mean it's a violation to give the board documents in support of an item less than 72 hours before the meeting. This is just regulating, ensuring that the public gets it in a timely fashion. So I want to talk a minute about the agenda, because I think the agenda is not only a series of obligations to you, it is a tool. It's one of the useful tools that you have for communicating with the public over what you are doing, and also, we'll see in a minute, what your expectations are for the public, and how they conduct themselves at their meetings. It's how you communicate with the public. So what does the Brown Act require around this? Number one, the agenda has to be posted in a timely way. So we'll talk about different types of meetings in a minute, but your public, regular meetings are posted 72, minimally 72 hours prior to the meeting. It has to be posted in a place that's accessible to the public, regardless of time of day. It has to state the time and the location of the meeting, provide a brief general description of each item, reflect that all meetings commence in public session, do make sure that that, that you are careful around that. Generally, you have been very good about that. No meeting of a board may begin in closed session, even if it's a special meeting to do the superintendent and president evaluation. So the only thing on the meeting is a closed session action, not an action item, but a closed session item, you still must open the meeting and open. Why is that? So they can have public comment on the closed session agenda, right? Exactly. So you have to make sure that you're doing that. Generally, the sport's been, 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 been fine on that, but I just haven't flagged that. And that it includes this opportunity for public comment. We've already talked about all the different places that that can go, and, and why that is. And it states where the public may inspect records. Now, there's some new technical requirements that I'm not going into detail here. There's a lot around managing the agenda that I don't think needs to come to the board level. But there are new rules about electronic access and electronic posting that your staff have to deal with, around how to find your agendas, and, and those sorts of things that have just gone into effect. So let's talk about some of the things agendas should not do. Number one, they should not use placeholders for closed session just in case something comes up. So there are districts who will put employee discipline dismissal release on every agenda just in case. Just in case a discipline issue comes up, we're covered, it's on the agenda. I think that's illegal. Because the purpose of the agenda is to give the public notice of what you're really doing. And if it's on every single agenda, that's not real notice, right? An analogy is, it's also been found unlawful if March 15th is rolling around, you don't have sufficient budget information to figure out whether or not you need to do a layoff, so you give everyone a layoff notice. That way, you meet your March 15th deadline. And that's been declared unlawful, because that's not meaningful notice. Because I don't know whether you're really serious about possibly meaning to lay me off, because you gave the notice to everybody. So no placeholders on the agenda. Two, don't misuse closed sessions, like, to cloak what should be part of the public discourse. My hard conversation earlier this week with a CEO, where I felt that that's what was going on. Require members of the public to provide identifying information in order to attend. Have to make sure you're not creating barriers to the public coming, coming to your meetings, and that's unlawful, and I gave you the government code section for that, 54953.3. Or prohibit public criticism of the policies, procedures, employees, trustees, programs, or acts of the board. We'll talk about this a little bit later when we talk about managing public comment, but just remember, the speech that public, members of the public make at, at, at public meetings, communicating with their public officials, is perhaps the most, or certainly one of the most types of protected speech, their highly protected speech there is. It's very, very protected political speech. In fact, things that outside, in the real world, might even be considered defamatory are going to be protected in this room. So members of the public get to come in and be highly critical, and we don't silence them. Okay? We'll talk more about that in a minute. So, so let's talk about this idea of compliance. So we've sort of run through, at sort of 30,000 feet, what the rules are. Now let's apply them in the context of a business meeting. How do we navigate the Brown Act in ways that technically comply, comply with the spirit of the act, but allow you to be highly efficient and, and, and advance the business of the district? So let's look at some of the rules. When is the board permitted to discuss or act? There are four ways in which you can act. So now we're thinking about, how do I act? How do we advance the, the interests of the district? Number one, on a properly agendized item at a regular meeting, open or closed. Number two, on a properly agendized item at a special meeting. Number three, at an emergency meeting, and we will talk about those. You have had to have emergency meetings, not in the too distant past, and I'm, I fear that you will have them again. Wildfires trigger emergency meetings. And then number four, on an emergency matter at a regular meeting. There are limited situations where at a regular meeting, you can take action on something that is not on the agenda, but it has to be where immediate action is required, and I'll explain in a minute what the law means by immediate action is required. Okay? So that's your four chances to, to act as, as a quorum, act as a board. The challenge that I, as I flagged earlier, is that you only have a few hours a month to advance the district's plans and programs. That's really all you get. So how do we make those hours count? In ways that comply with the Brown Act. And so here's where I want to stop for a minute. So the, this Brown Act discussion is in service to your goals as a board, and not just some external training. And ask you the question, what do you think the attributes are of a well-run meeting? And I've put down a few that I've, I've developed an understanding of through my work and through hearing from the trustees that I work with. Efficient, focused on matters within the board's jurisdiction, action-oriented, that further the district's goals, policies, and plans, that complete all agenda items within the allotted time, that are, and that are flexible, that there, you have the ability to prioritize and address mat pressing issues as they come up, and that trustees are engaged in well-informed dialogue, trustees are coming to meetings highly prepared. So those are some of the things that are the attributes of a well-run business meeting. What else would you add to the list? If anything?
Public participation.
Okay? Public participation. What else? Do you think are, yeah, please?
The, the staff has, the board members have been well-prepared with all the information, and there's nothing left to wonder about during the meeting.
So, so well-run meetings are where staff have provided the information necessary for trustees to do their work. So, for example, if you are asked to rule on a, a discipline appeal, you're not being handed the packet in closed session the day you're supposed to make the decision. Right? So you're getting information, the correct amount of information, I would say, which means not too much, as well as not too little, in time to become well-informed. Yeah? Anything else? Well-prepared? Yes, trustee Baker?
Not presentations, just to have presentations or not. I guess it's because it sounds good, but actually, the dead items are meaningful, depending that how, how the time is.
Right. That's, I think that's right on point, and you'll actually see a slide in a couple of minutes that talk about effective compliance and the utilization of reports and other things at meetings to advance the business of the district.
I would add to that as well, not just timely in terms of it being relevant, but timely in that if we need to make a change, that we're not up against a deadline where we're being forced to make a decision that doesn't feel good, because we have to meet a deadline.
I think that's right, and I think trustee Baker, that, that dovetails with what, what was just said by Catherine, which is that you're not getting information so late that you're either feeling rushed to make a decision, or you're being forced to table a decision in ways that could create liabilities, because you're, you're failing to meet some sort of external deadline.
No surprises.
No surprises. Yes.
Would fatigue fit in there somewhere?
Fatigue?
I would recommend cake.
Well, I was, well, you were, so, so I guess one of the things that, that, that good trainers do is they take questions, and they turn them into the ones they want them to be. So here's what I think, what I, what I take away from that, trustee Baldini, is I have opined that it is a violation of the Brown Act to regularly exceed the time of your meetings. So I had a board that was regularly going until midnight or 1:00 in the morning at their meetings. And in addition to it being, so there, the, the, the public access became an endurance test. And, and to me, that, that negatively impacted the idea of true public participation, which is that we are going to, we are going to drag these things out. And I'm, and I'm not saying this board was doing it intentionally for that purpose, but it had the effect of, when they finally voted at 2:00 in the morning on this difficult issue, nobody's left in the room. So I think we do have to be concerned about running our meetings in an efficient way and meeting our deadlines, not necessarily to avoid fatigue, but it's consistent with avoiding fatigue. The same challenge comes up with, if we aren't anticipating well enough what needs to get done, that's when we end up throwing in a couple of special meetings. Uh-oh, we just realized that the March meeting is March 17th, in a year that we're going to do layoffs. What does that mean? No one thought about that? Special meeting on March 12th? Or we have a statutory deadline by which something must get done, a tort claim has to be denied. And we forgot, it wasn't brought to a particular meeting, now we have to have a special meeting. Now, some of those are unavoidable. The need for a special meeting is not an indication of poor planning. It is sometimes necessary. But we can avoid fatigue by good planning, so that we are filling up our agendas as best we can, and not painting ourselves into the special meeting corner unnecessarily. Is that perhaps getting at what you were talking about?
Yes, absolutely. And the, we've never had a time, is that, is it, what is the practice within the state as far as end time?
I think you do. Don't your agendas have an end time?
No.
I think you should put an end time. You might want to think about that. Not, I mean, not create something that's too unreasonable, but you might think about end times for your meetings. And then, of course, the other thing that, around fatigue, is what you generally should have, and I think your agendas do this, is that you, you, you do agendize a continuation of closed session at the end of your meeting. Now, that's important, and you need to keep that there, because your public expects your meeting, your regular meeting, to start at 6:00 P.M. And you are in closed session on a lengthy matter, you are not able to get it done, and you don't want to be rushed, right? So your choices are either to make your public sit and wait, which I know trustees do not like to do, and I think occasionally, making the public wait 15 minutes or half an hour to finish an item is not going to be a violation of the Brown Act. But again, you do not want to make it a regular practice to not be timely in starting your open sessions. That means you've got to have the safety valve of going back into closed, which you really can't do if you haven't agendized it. Then you get, you get the slap on the hands for that one, too. But it's good, but, but, but I have watched boards be way too leisurely in the way they are managing the open, the, the first of the closed sessions, and I'm sitting there with them, thinking, "They're going to end up in closed session at 10:00 P.M. if they don't move this along." And so I think efficiency in the way you run your closed sessions is also going to be an issue related to fatigue, because if you don't get it done, you're back in there at 10:00 o'clock to finish up what needs to get finished on. So the efficient, the efficiency of our meetings is both about running our closed sessions efficiently, as well as our open sessions. Okay? Okay, so let's keep these sort of general attributes in mind in thinking about Brown Act compliance, so that it's in service to these goals. Flexibility, appropriate public access and communication, well-preparedness, you know, those sorts of things. Okay? So I've identified four areas where I think you can be, boards can improve their efficiencies. One is that you appropriately exercise your authority to impose content-neutral rules on public comment. So we'll talk about how we manage public comment. Content neutrality, of course, is absolutely imperative. And so anytime I talk about public comment, I make sure to do that. This is not a free speech, First Amendment training. Nevertheless, anytime we talk about limiting the public's comment, I've got to remind you of that. What we don't get to say is, anyone who wants to compliment us and tell us what a great job we're doing, you're welcome to talk as long as you want. But if you have anything critical to say, you get two minutes. Right? That would be clearly illegal. So number one is how we manage the public. Number two is time management, which you've also identified. How do we manage ourselves? Number three is the effective use of closed session. Are we using it in an effective way? And number four is the effective and lawful use of special and emergency meetings and board committees. This is what I call lawful agility. And what I mean by lawful agility is, where are the situations where you legally can advance the district's business in between your regular meetings? When are you allowed to do that, and how can you use those as effectively as possible while complying with the Brown Act? So let's talk first about the, the participation of the public piece. The board does have the authority to impose content-neutral rules on public comment. They, you may adopt reasonable neutral regulations that address, number one, the timing of public comment, when it occurs during the meeting, so long as it's before the board acts. So we've, and we've already talked about that. There are different places, you can put it on the agenda, you just have to make sure that the public has the right to comment before you act on open or closed session items, and that you can also limit the length of time, but you have to be consistent.
When you say be consistent, does that mean within that meeting, or does it have to be consistent across all meetings? Because I, I believe that we've written our board policy to basically allow the president of the board to make changes as needed.
I think that's exactly what you should do. So the, 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 the principle behind consistency is that people are being treated equally, right? And so in a specific meeting, allowing one person to go on and on and on, and then silencing somebody else is not treating them equally. But we, but you'll see in a minute, one of the things I recommend for, for efficiency in meetings, is that you trust and give a fair amount of authority to your board president to run a good meeting. And we have to trust our board presidents do that work. And districts that, boards that don't trust their presidents do that work, that's a good good check-in that you have a symptom of a dysfunctional board that needs to come together better as a board. Right? So you have a super controversial issue where many, many people are going to want to speak. The board president may decide, we're going to expand the total time for public comment. Or it's a complex matter, and you're going to allow people to speak a little bit longer. Or you are going to allow people to contribute their time so that one person collects the time from 18 different people and then sits there and talks to you for a long time. Let, the board, as long as that is being done consistently. So I think that that can not only be varied meeting to meeting, it can vary item to item. Right? So now we're taking up the issue of whether or not we are going to eliminate our arts program. We're going to eliminate our nursing program. So we're going to increase the amount of time on that matter, and we're going to allow people to talk for five minutes rather than three. Or reduce the amount of time. I see that we have 50 cards on this. So this is what we're going to do. We're going to limit, we're going to limit time to two minutes, and if you are going to repeat something that somebody else already said, please just stand up and indicate you support what so-and-so said and sit down.
I've been at meetings where we had somebody talking, and they were getting close to the end of their time, and then somebody in the audience just said, "Give him my time." You know, and so it was, is there a limit on that? Because it seems like people donating their time is difficult.
The answer to that is that you treat everybody consistently. If the board wishes to have a rule that you are not allowed to donate your time to anybody else, that's your, that's your rule. You can do that. If you don't want that rule, then don't do it. If you want to say, we'll allow people to donate, we'll allow one donation, but we do not want one person monopolizing, even if it's because they've taken the time from other people, because that could preclude others from having an opportunity to speak to you in our limited session. As long as you apply your rules consistently, those are your rules, and it's for you to decide how you want to run that part of public comment. Brown Act doesn't care about that. Okay? You may prohibit comment on matters outside the body's jurisdiction. If you have a somewhat warped and nerdy sense of humor like me, you can go read some of the minutes from meetings of the Santa Monica Housing Authority and the disputes that have arisen over silencing people that want to get up and talk about U.S. foreign policy that ended up in fistfights. So, so you can cut off time, turn off microphone, whatever you need to do if somebody is getting up and clearly speaking on something that is outside your jurisdiction. You can control the timing, I've already mentioned this, of matters agendized for the public. So the public can say, I want this matter heard, but you can decide which agenda it goes on. We've talked about that. And you may prohibit disorderly conduct, and I'm going to give you the process for doing that in just another slide. Just a crypt thing to remember, a public comment provides the board with information to conduct its business. It is not a conversation with the public. Right? So you're not, you're not having a dialogue with the public. You are listening, and then you are deliberating. I have a suggestion for, for trustees that I sometimes share around this because sometimes trustees feel uncomfortable with this idea. You're elected officials, you feel accountable to your public, they get up, they speak, and all you do is look at them stony-faced and say, "Thank you," and they sit down. And you worry that it gives the appearance that you're indifferent to what they have to say, you don't care, what have you. I have created language at the request of board presidents from time to time that they state at the beginning of a meeting that says, we're now turning, you know, I'm just reminding the members of the public that when we hear public comment, we appreciate it, we value it, we all consider it when we deliberate on matters. We don't respond, however, during your public comment. This is not a dialogue with you, and that isn't even agendized. Please don't misinterpret our silence as indifference. We are all listening and value blah, 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 blah. So you can say something like that if there's discomfort among trustees over the wall of sort of silence that the, that the public gets. So I sort of suggest that to you, if that appeals to you. So in terms of regulating public comment, turning back again to this idea that the agenda is a tool that you can utilize for efficiency in your meetings, make sure that it includes the rules for public comment and how members of the public may place items on the agenda. So that helps to manage public expectations. It makes your rules transparent and clear so they understand how you choose to manage your public comment, what your rules are about donating time, how much time individuals are allowed to speak, when during the meeting public comment occurs. So again, use your agendas to communicate with your public. Now, what happens if there's disorderly conduct during a meeting? The board chair reminds disruptive individuals of the board's rules regarding willful interruption, proper decorum during the meetings. Then, if the disruption continues, you clear the room. What, you, you don't just remove the disruptive individuals, you clear the room except for the press, unless the press is causing the disruption. Then you get to, then you get to remove the press as well. But generally, the media will stay. Then you have a process that will be in your rules that allows you to readmit those individuals who are not disruptive. So that's the way it's handled. You clear the room, and then people come back in. Okay? So let's do a few what-ifs. Public comment. What do we do in this situation? A member of the public comes up, you've got discipline dismissal release on the agenda. I know that this is to discuss the termination of a, of an employee. And I get up and I say, I want to tell you I wholeheartedly support the termination of Dr. Jones. Dr. Jones is incompetent. Dr. Jones doesn't know what Dr. Jones is doing. Dr. Jones ruined my life. Dr. Jones did this. What do you do? Mention the person, talking about their, what do you do? Nothing. Nothing. The Brown Act regulates what you say and what you do. It does not regulate the public. So you don't get to say, okay, we're going to closed session to talk about Dr. Jones and what a disaster Dr. Jones is. You don't get to say that. But, but, but when the public speaks, the public is not precluded from identifying individuals by name. Okay? So again, you just listen, and you move on. During general public comment states that he, I, I'm here to tell you that I'm a district employee, and I have been the subject of discrimination. I'm being harassed at work, and I'm being treated badly because of my gender. And I say that to you as a board. What do you do?
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to, to refer them to, you know, the staff that they should be speaking to, to, or, you know, so that they can file a correct report, blah, blah, blah?
So here's an example of, it's not on the agenda that you're going to refer a complaint, but it doesn't matter. So what you would do is that, I think in this situation, is, is you would say, we have a process for addressing those issues, and I'm going to ask President Kraft to communicate with you after this meeting to make sure you understand that process. And this person goes, I've already tried that. And you just say, I'm referring to President Kraft. I've already talked to President Kraft. I'm referring to President Kraft. Right? You're not going to sort of engage, you're not going to engage in fact-finding, you're not going to tease out more information, you're going to refer it. Right? And that's what I think you would do. And by the way, that's one of the reasons that I have had some board presidents like the language that says, just because we're not engaging with you doesn't mean we don't care. So that's that. What about during general public comment, the speaks, someone gets up and wants to talk about U.S. foreign policy? I may wish that you could control U.S. foreign policy, but it is unfortunately outside your jurisdiction. So that's a situation where you could direct that the individual sit down. And then what happens if, to the, you know, someone else shouts for the above person to shut up? That starts crossing the line into what is disruptive. So what I think of as disruptive behavior by the public is when I am impeding somebody else's ability to communicate. My own communication, it can be loud, I think it can probably be profane. I think it can be, I think I can use offensive language. That's, for the most part, going to be protected political speech. But once I start blocking somebody else's ability to communicate, my sign is so big that, and I hold it up so nobody else behind me can see, you can tell me to move my sign or to go stand on the side where it's not going to distract somebody. Or I shout so somebody else cannot be heard. That's what I think of as disruptive. What about a request that the board to agendize poor conditions of the science labs? So, nothing, these are hypotheticals. So, so what I would, so this actually, I think I would handle similar to the way Trusty Baker talked about the earlier issue around the discrimination complaint. Yes, the public has the right to place items on your agenda, but there is a procedure. And the procedure isn't that they come to your meeting and tell you that. And so I think what you would do is you say, there's, thank you, there is a procedure for getting items placed on our agenda, and I'm going to ask that Trusty Kraft make sure that, I'm sorry, President Kraft, make sure that you're aware of that process. And you move on. Just refer it and move on. An action item, on an action item, to award a contract to a construction firm, a member of the public stands up and says that this will violate the conflicts of interest laws because it financially benefits Trusty Smith. What do you think?
Well, is, does it really, or is that just that person's opinion?
I know as much as you do. I'm sitting, we're sitting, you're sitting there with, you've got an action item, and someone in the public now says, Trusty Smith is going to get rich off this contract.
Would Trusty Smith have the opportunity at that point to say, I've already considered that, or?
So what do you do?
To recuse myself, or?
Well, there is no recusal. That's a different workshop, but remember, under, under government code 1099, if any trustee has a financial interest in a contract, the entire board is, has the conflict. There is no recusal cure for a 1099 conflict. So what do you do? Any idea? Here's what I think you do. So this is public, so this goes back to sort of the roots of why is, what is public comment for? Public comment is to give you inform, remember, this is your business meeting, it's not the public's meeting, it's your business meeting. The public presents information before you act because it may provide information that you think is relevant to your deliberations. So the public, a member of the public has now made this claim, they just sit down like any other member of the public. Then, when you take up the action item, you turn to your fellow trustees and say, is anyone else concerned about this? Is this something we need to look into? That's part of your, that becomes part of your deliberations as a board. Trusty Smith, do you have any idea what this person is talking about? Oh, yes, this was a claim that was made, it was looked into, we got an opinion about it, I don't really have a conflict, or no. And then you, as a board, are going to decide whether, in your deliberations, you think the matter should get pulled and tabled, or whether you don't have the concern and you're going to go forward with the contract. So, so the, the, sort of the trick in this scenario is that if you peel back the layers of the onion, it's like any other public comment, which is, have I heard something that affects the way I think about how I should act? Does it make me feel like I don't have all the information I need and I want to move to table? Am I not worried? Or am I so convinced by what I've heard that it's going to affect my position on the item? And that's what public comment is there for, is to give you more information to help you deliberate and then act as a board. All right? So then quickly, let's get to time management, which I'm not doing as good a job on as I should. Actually, we're doing okay. Here are some tips for how to manage your time well as a board in ways that fully comply with the Brown Act. One is what I mentioned already, which is permitting a strong board chair. I'll talk, and I'll, I've got some slides after each of these that sort of flushes these out of it, so I'm just going to quickly go through the list here and then move on to the other slides. Permit a strong board chair that can help build agendas, assign ad hoc committees, authorize limited consultations with legal counsel in between meetings and that sort of thing. Agenda planning and preparation so that your meetings are realistic, well-prioritized, well-organized, that you're, excuse me, utilizing permissible pre-meeting communications with administrators. Dr. Kraft, that's what you had just asked about, and I, we will get to that in a minute, is how do we effectively utilize those communications with administrators? Effective use of ad hoc committees. Board, effective use of board packets and meeting preparation. One of the things you identified as an attribute of an efficient meeting is that you're getting good packets in a timely way that help you be well-prepared for your meetings. The effective use of information, items, and staff reports. This goes to Trusty Goff, what you brought up, which is, are we really using staff reports and other parts in a way that helps us move and advance our meetings forward? So I'll talk about that for a little bit. And then appropriate board reports. I have some thoughts about what board reports are for and what they are not for, and that can also help you manage your time well and have a more efficient meeting. Agendas, again, are a tool. Not, they, they communicate with the public about what we're going to do, what our expectations of the public are, and they also help you with a well-run meeting because they provide focus to the board as well as to the public. This is what, this is your roadmap with every meeting, is your agenda. So it helps you plan, it helps you prioritize, it helps you improve your communication, and they build institutional memory. I go back to agendas often in trying to trace the history of an item if we're trying to, in litigation or something, where we need to figure something out. Those agendas can be very important part of your institutional memory. So in terms of agenda, prior, preparation and prioritization, remember that the public may place items on an agenda, but they don't get to control which one. The board president has the discretion and authority to prioritize board member requests. Now, this is a, this is a question I get fairly often from trustees about what's the, there's the process of the public getting to put things on the agenda, but all of you get to put things on the agenda. And how does that work? And that's a conversation that you continue to have as trustees over, how do we get those items on the agenda? And how much discretion are we going to give to our board president to say, great idea, this agenda's full, we'll put it on in March? Or, great idea, what we're putting it on in three months when we take this up? Or, this has been on the last three agendas, I'm not putting it on again. This board with a slightly different configuration of trustees adopted some rules of engagement that we worked on together, which included, we will not backtrack and rehash items that we've already acted on unless the facts or the law have caused a change that we, that we should take up and reconsider, but that we're not going to continually churn the same matters over and over and over again. Your board presidents have utilized that rule to say to trustees, I'm not putting this on an agenda. This is a backtracking on something we've already acted on. Okay? Those, those rules are not Brown Act rules. Those are your internal governance rules over how you are going to place things on agendas. You just want to make sure you're doing it in a way that balances the, the First Amendment rights, in a sense, of individual trustees to act as elected officials with the internal govern- governance of the boards, so that you're acting efficiently and not continually rehashing the same issue over and over again. And these are things you revisit from time to time as a board. By the way, we'll get to it in a minute, but when you want to have that discussion over your own governance and how should trustees get to put things on the agenda, where do you have that discussion? Open or closed session?
Open.
Okay. So of course, that is open session. There is, you are not employees of the district, and how you govern yourselves, and whether you've behaved well or not, and whether you've made ethical violations or conflicts of interest, all of that is under the public eye. None of that occurs in closed session. The, the, the board president should be planning the, and building the agenda with the superintendent president. That is just one of the, and I, I apologize, I think your written slides say chancellor, I realized after I sent the slides in that I have two versions of this training. They're identical, except that one is written for multi-college districts that have chancellors, and one has, is written for a single college district with superintendent president. So I, I changed it here, but your, your slides are slightly different. So that is a very, very important function. The, the president of the college and the president of the board getting together and planning the agenda and building the agenda, and what's realistic, and what are our most important items. And that relationship between the presidents is a critically important one for the smooth operation of the district. And that meeting in no way implicates the Brown Act. Consider the timing of public hearings and items of high public interest. And I say consider them in a way to ensure full public access and participation, not, oh, this is, this is a really, really, really controversial issue, so let's put it the last thing on the agenda after we hope everyone's gone home. No. Rather, you have a packed standing room only, public, at a meeting, because everyone's here for a particular item, and that's foreseeable, you make that item first. Don't make people sit through 18 board reports and the consent agenda and everything when they're here to talk about the nursing program. All right? Put it first. I also think, in terms of agility, can the board president be, we're surprised, we're shocked that there's so much interest, we had no idea. Move to amend the agenda. Let's put this first. Can you do that? Sure. Sure, that's part of your, your flexibility. Consider the timing of lengthy closed session items and plan accordingly, and use that continuation of closed session in order to address those matters, so you're not keeping your public waiting for your regular meetings. So, agenda preparation and prioritization is what, is one of the ways you can build in some efficiency. So, how do you construct your agendas to get the job done? Your goal is that agendas help boards complete their business. That's what they're there for, help you to complete your business. So, when and how should agendas be constructed? Each board member has requested an urgent matter be placed on the next meeting agenda. What do you do? Do you want your board president to have the authority to say, we're not putting them all on the next agenda? Right? A member of the public's request a matter to be placed on the agenda. What are your options? I think we've sort of talked that one into the ground, unless you have any more questions about it. So this is what President Kraft was asking about, is permissible, permissible communications with administrators. So, administrators are permitted under the Brown Act to have individual members, have meetings with individual members of the board, or with groups of less than a quorum. So that, it is not a violation of the Brown Act, the technically, I kept, I start worrying about the spirit of Brown Act, but it's not a violation for the, the, the president to sit down with three trustees and have a meeting. Not a quorum. But, it has to be for the purpose only of conveying information to the trustees. It's a fairly one-way communication. Once the trustees start talking, then we get worried, because you're now talking to each other. Now, as long as it's only three, you're fine, but what I worry about as soon as you get to three is, one of you then goes home and picks up the phone and calls trustee number four, and says, so I just had a really interesting meeting with President Kraft, this is what we talked about, I was there, and Bob was there, and Susie was there. You've now created a Brown Act violation. Because that is now the fourth trustee that's been brought into the discussion. And, and that's what we have to be very careful about. So it's a one-way communication, it's permissible, but trustees have to be careful not to inadvertently create a serial meeting by increasing that communication to more than three, and the administrator can't act as a conduit. So, the president may convey information, but can't, should not convey what other trustees are saying. All right? You can't be a messenger in between trustees, because that will also, that's impermissible. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted them to be clear.
Right. Did I, I knew you knew the answer, but I covered what you wanted me to cover. Okay. So, another component around compliance with the Brown Act and good time management goes to board packets and meeting preparation, which, again, you identified this in that slide where we said, what does a good meeting look like? What are you looking for? These are essential for efficient meetings. Just make sure that you treat them appropriately for your eyes only, I mentioned that earlier. Let administration sift apart, this is what we're going to dispost to the public, this is what we are holding back. Just because it's labeled "public agenda" doesn't mean that you should be sharing that information. The board packet you receive is only for your eyes. So then, let's talk a minute about items, information items and staff reports, which trustee Goff flagged. So what's the purpose of a staff report? What's the purpose of an information item? It is to give information to the board that's relevant to matters within its purview. And I would say, even more broadly, or, or more focused, within their purview, not just generally, but related to either policy that you're developing, an action that you're being asked to take, that keeps you, that help, that gives you information that may affect your shape of policy. That, so, so I think staff reports that inform you about the state of the district, how programs are going, success stories are, are fine. I'm not suggesting they're not. Those may inform policy decisions. They may also inform budget decisions. You know, so, where, where are we shining and where are we struggling may affect your guidance on budget allocations, one of your, another one of your core functions. So, so these, so board reports can have a very immediate relevancy. They may also just give you good, deep information that help you shape policy and budget. But that's what they're there for, is to help you function as a trustee. And, we do have some suggestions around how you interact with staff around reports. Now, this is, this piece that I'm sharing now is not Brown Act particularly, but it is an opportunity to talk to you about best practices around efficient meetings, which are ultimately in service to what you do. For the most part, so, a, your, your CBO gets up and gives you a budget report, or your, your, another administrator gets up and gives you information about the district. If you have a clarifying question, just to specifically understand the information that is being presented, I think that's okay. But beyond that, if what you're asking, if you're, if what you're doing is digging a little deeper, you don't do it during a public meeting. Partly, it's a, it's a, it's about a respect for your, your staff, is that you're not putting them on the spot in a meeting in that way. And, we also want to, and this actually goes to your standard for accreditation piece, another piece that you should be thinking about, which is, accreditation requires everybody to play their own role. That's what standard for, the accreditation standards is. Trustees are going to act like trustees, and presidents like presidents, and, and everyone's going to follow their own role. And you have good policies around this, okay? But who is the person that should be deciding which staff should be doing further research on a matter, and which staff should be looking into something further? Who makes that decision? Your superintendent president. Right? So, the, the way it should work, and we have talked about this before, is if an individual trustee wants more information, wants more data, wants more analysis from fiscal, from HR, okay? I, I think that there are two steps that happen. Step one is, the, if this is happening in an open meeting in particular, is that the board president is checking for some level of consensus that other trustees think this information is important and matters. Because no one trustee should have the authority to burden staff. They're not your staff, they're his staff. Right? I believe, and, and we've been through a number of, of president evaluations, so some of you know this, that, that, that part of creating a cohesive, high-functioning board is that you respect and listen to the views of what I call a strongly-held minority. So this isn't a strict majority rule thing, but I, and this is nothing that has to be agendized, this isn't an action of the board, but a board report, you know, an administrator is giving a report, a trustee feels the report is incomplete, they want more information. I think what that trustee does is looks to the president of the board and says, I think we need more information about the impact of declining enrollment, and how that's going to affect our funding, AB70, whatever the issue is. I think the board president looks at the rest of the board and say, do other people think that that would be helpful to our work? The actions we're bringing, we're taking up, the policies we're developing, do we need more information? And if you're seeing a bunch of heads nodding, then you turn to the president and you say, President Kraft, could you please take care of it? And then President Kraft decides which of my staff has the time and the expertise to generate the additional information. All right? So that's, right, individual trustees are not picking up the phone and calling CBOs, and not picking up the phone and calling HR and saying, I need this report for the board meeting, I need this. We, I've got certain districts that are absolutely incapacitated for four days before a board meeting, because every trustee is calling every administrator for their particular areas of interest and project. And so they are unable to do other work. And we have to, we have to protect against that. All right? So, that's, that's a little bit beyond just pure Brown Act, but this is sort of how to, how to use Brown Act in ways that help you be highly efficient as a board, and that's just one of the suggestions around managing board reports and information from your, your staff, your, your, your experts, really, or your administrative staff. And then there are the board reports. So, same thing, what's the, the purpose of a board report is to talk to your fellow trustees. It's to give the board information that's relevant to matters within the board's purview and matters before the board. This is, these are not presentations to the public. And this is about, again, creating highly, you've got one meeting a month with your fellow trustees. You can meet with your constituents whenever you want. All right? So, letting your public know, letting your constituents know, letting the electorate know what you've been up to, what you care about, what your position is on various issues, where you've been, what you're doing, absolutely. Do it in your blogs, your tweets, your newsletters, your Twitters, however you choose to communicate with the public, you go do it there. You don't do it in this meeting. This is a meeting of you guys that the public is watching. Okay? That helps you to be efficient. I also believe that it helps you avoid a type of conflict that I have seen, and that is utilizing the public resources of this meeting for campaigning. All right? This is not where you're built, this is not the time you use to build your relationships with your constituents. Those are very important things, they're part of your First Amendment rights as elected officials, but you do it outside of this meeting. Save this meeting, this precious time that you have with each other, for your conversations with each other. All right? Closed session. So, the rule is that, the assumption is that you're doing the, your, your, the assumption is that you're meeting in the public, unless there is an exception, and exceptions are read narrowly. All right? The default is public session. One of the challenges for people who are new to elected office in a public setting is getting comfortable with being in a fishbowl. That's where you live. That's democracy. All right? Is you operate in a fishbowl. Here are the common exceptions, I'm not going to go through all of the, there's some very technical ones, but the common ones are pending litigation, personnel matters, conference with labor negotiator, real property transactions, and student discipline complaints. Those are the ones that you will see most often in closed session. The cardinal rule is this, it should be very hard to get into closed session on a matter, but once you are there, it is sacrosanct. It is sacrosanct. What happens in closed session stays in closed session. It is confidential, it is in fact a crime to disclose closed session deliberations. It has both civil and criminal implications. I already mentioned to you my general rule, if the board is facing a matter that's controversial, embarrassing, messy, or complicated, and would love to handle it quickly and quietly in closed session, that's a pretty good indicator that the matter should be heard in open session. That's what the rule is there for, is to make sure those things happen in public. Okay? Some rules about closed session. Number one, who attends? Obviously, members of the governing board. Second, support staff necessary to inform on a specific matter. I have some districts, everybody comes into closed session for the whole closed session, everybody's there. Better practice is, you're bringing in staff as needed. It avoids the appearance of something unlawful called a quasi-public meeting. All right? Quasi-public meetings where some of the public gets in and some doesn't is not lawful. And as soon as you have people in the meeting that don't have a reason to be there, it starts to look like a quasi-public meeting. Okay? Outside consultants that are necessary to inform or assist on a matter. And this is your discretion. The Brown Act doesn't tell you who you need to have in a meeting. If, if having somebody in a meeting will be useful to your deliberations, then you get to have them there. Okay? Staff that are not needed on a matter, I think the better practice is to excuse them. And then, I do want to talk a little bit about what happens when you're in your quasi-judicial capacity. For the most, most of the time, you are acting in what's called a quasi-legislative role. You're setting policy, you're setting budget, you're establishing, that's a legislative type of, of, of action. But you also are quasi-judicial. That's when you act as a neutral in a dispute. Okay? You act as a neutral in disputes when those disputes are between the district and somebody else. That somebody else is usually a student or an employee. An expelled student who appeals their expulsion to you. A terminated employee who appeals to you. That is the one situation where the district suddenly has two heads instead of one. On most matters, administration and board are of one piece. You act together, you think together, there is no conflict that you are sharing information and working together. But once there is a dispute between the district and an employee, for example, you are separate from the district. You are now the board in a dispute. And in that instance, when you go into closed session, administration stays outside. Otherwise, it, that's not a Brown Act issue, it's a due process issue. That's like a judge letting one side of the case in, but not the other. And that's a violation of fundamental fairness. So I had a, I advised a board earlier this week on the appeal of a discrimination complaint. So, she asserted gender discrimination, the district interviewed, investigated, determined it was not sustained, and the law permits that to be appealed to the board. So I went into closed session to guide the board on whether the appeal should be granted or not, and the, the head of the district sat there, and I said to Bob- or not, and the head of the district sat there, and I said to Bob, "You've got to get out." And I, it was, you know, I, we had talked about it earlier, he had just sort of forgotten, and then he remembered, he left. But he thought he was going to stay there, I go, "No, you can't, because you're on one side of the dispute." All right? So, that's the one thing to be careful about, is that in closed session, make sure you do not have in the room one side of the dispute. So let's just look at a few open-closed. The superintendent president wants to update the board on the status of a contract grievance arbitration. Do you think you could do that in an open session or closed session? Any ideas? So here's the problem with this one, these are all, none of these are easy, that's why they're up here. A contract grievance is considered pending litigation. So pending litigation is a permissible closed-session item. However, it is only a permissible closed-session item if it is for the purpose of receiving the advice of legal counsel. So a common mistake is, is a CEO going into closed session to talk about lawsuits, grievances, and other matters. That is not permissible. And that is one of the more common mistakes that I see. So, the subject matter is fine for closed session, but it's only for the purpose of receiving the advice of legal counsel. They're symbiotic, those two things. Now, the advice of legal counsel on pending litigation, best practice is your attorney is there in the room with you. That is the safest, most conservative interpretation of this requirement of the Brown Act. As a practical matter, we also understand issues of cost, issues of logistics, sometimes I need to be at two different board meetings on the same night. So, I have participated in many public, I mean, sorry, closed sessions by telephone. I don't think that is a problem. The third way, which is the least desirable, but we'll do in a pinch, is the superintendent president is walking into closed session with an opinion letter from legal counsel. And so it's being conveyed in that way. Don't love it, but it's something that we do from time to time. Second, the board wants to discuss budget with the labor negotiator. Open or closed? So here's an example of a dangerous sort of slippery slope. Do you get to confer with your labor negotiator in closed session? Yes. Do you get to give compensation parameters? Yeah, I'm going to meet with a board in two weeks to get my authority to negotiate the faculty contract in a district, and I need to know how much money am I allowed to spend? Those conversations you can have in closed session to guide your negotiator. But be careful you don't use that as a way to talk about budget in closed session. Whether you're fiscally sound or not, whether you're in deficit or not, whether or not you are, where your reserves are, those are all public discussions. I would also suggest that, just as a practical matter, that negotiations and other hard decisions that boards have to make go much more smoothly if you're getting budget information out there sooner rather than later. The only thing that you should convey more quickly than good news is bad news. And, and high levels of transparency build trust with your, with your employees and employee groups, and, and trust in numbers and that sort of information is so helpful to overall labor relations and negotiations. So be careful about what you're talking about with your labor negotiators in closed session. Strategy around negotiations, yes. Certainly, I would not think that, I don't think that would be an appropriate closed session if you're, if you don't have an open contract. So, number one, you'd better be in negotiations, and what you're talking about are negotiation strategies, negotiation parameters. Okay? But don't overuse it. And of course, this is completely hypothetical, no HR director I know would do this. The HR director wants to discuss layoffs under dismissal, discipline, release. After all, it is a release of employees, so let's talk about layoffs in closed session because that's one of those icky, difficult, hard conversations we'd much rather not have in open session. Absolutely not. So the discipline, dismissal, release exception is to protect the privacy of individual employees that are being subject to negative action. Layoff is not about the performance of your employees. It is indifferent to the performance of your employees. It is an economic decision, and you may not discuss it in closed session under that. The board wants to meet with legal counsel to understand options for hiring procedures. Could not do that in closed. So this is the way it works. You may have your legal counsel in closed session in two situations. One, under the pending litigation exception, it's required. Or two, on any other legitimate closed-session item where you would find the advice of legal counsel helpful. So remember I said earlier, you as a board get to decide who will be helpful to you in a closed session, and you may bring them in. So I could come in on a discipline dismissal release, a labor negotiations issue, a property transaction, anything that's appropriately in closed session, you can bring your legal counsel in on, but it does not create the exception. There is no Brown Act exception called consultation with legal counsel that allows you to talk about whatever you want in closed session. Right? So, you have to look to the underlying topic. The underlying topic is developing a general understanding of hiring procedures. There is no Brown Act exception to cover that. So you can't get into closed session on that basis by saying, "But it's to talk to our lawyer about it." Okay? The board wants to discuss a board member conflict of interest issue. Open or closed? That would have to be open session. Now, let me give you a spoiler alert. What we're going to talk about at the very end is the effective use of ad hoc committees. And so, just keep in mind that what this slide is saying is, if your intention is to discuss this at a meeting of the full board, does it happen in open or does it happen in closed? This answers the question, open or closed. Is not saying you, the only place you can do this is in the open session of a public meeting. Quite frankly, the way we manage many of these things is through an ad hoc committee. If we believe there is a trustee that has a conflict of interest, what we do, the respectful thing to do, is number one, is a private meeting with that individual trustee. With, and this is, and this is consistent with your internal policies. A private meeting with that trustee with an ad hoc committee appointed by the board president. I need two trustees to look into this potential ethical violation. Meet with a trustee, see if you can work it out. So it doesn't mean that you have to blast it out in the open meeting, that can be done with two trustees because that doesn't violate the Brown Act because it's less, it's an ad hoc committee, less than a quorum. So, there are other ways to address some of these issues outside of a meeting, but if you're in a meeting, this is telling you that these things are all going to end up in open session. The report out after closed session is also something to be, make sure you're clear on. The board must always reconvene into open session before adjourning. So, every single meeting of the board must begin an open session and it must end an open session. Even if it's a special meeting where the only thing you have on the agenda is evaluation of the superintendent president. You open and, open and you close in open session. In open session, you have to report out all actions that were taken in closed. Let me, let me explain what that means. Action here means final actions of the board. Only final actions. Giving direction to the college, to the president to look into the viability of purchasing, of purchasing a building is not a final action. Even if the president of the board says, "I want to poll the trustees and make sure everybody agrees." Even if you all vote, even if you treat the matter formally, it's not a final action because there are many steps that will occur before anything finally occurs. So the only thing you're required to report out are your final actions. This comes up in particular on personnel issues. So, on a personnel issue, you do not report it out until the employees have the opportunity to exercise their full due-process rights. On a faculty, faculty termination procedures require you as a board to authorize the issuance of a notice of charges. Administration can't do that without your approval. You get together and you vote. A classified employee, you agree that a classified employee should be terminated. That's not a final action because both of those individuals have the right to request a full evidentiary hearing. And so you don't announce out, it's not final, until that entire process is carried through. Okay? That's one of the trickier announce-out issues. Settlements is another one. Now, one thing you should all know, of course, is that any settlement with a public entity is a public record. That's a different body of law that deals with transparency of our documents. So, all settlements are public. That's different from what you have to announce out. But if you approve a settlement in closed session, that's a final action, you're going to have to report out its terms. One of the ways we handle that is that you delegate the authority to negotiate final settlements to your, your president, and it comes back to you as an information item. But if you want to be involved in a final settlement of a litigation matter, for example, and you want to approve the final terms, that will be a final action that you'll have to report out. Value of the settlement, the whole thing. And then, as I also just mentioned a minute ago, confidentiality is absolutely critical. You are not permitted to disclose your deliberations, your recollections of what occurs in closed session, and it has both criminal and civil implications. And then the last of these, so I sort of identified these four ways that you can build in efficiency and high-functioning as a board with, while complying with the Brown Act. And the last of this is this idea of lawful agility. And that is, how can you advance the interests of the district in between your regular meetings in ways that are lawful? Some basic do's and don'ts. Make sure that you do follow the notice and subject matter requirements. So your special meetings, your emergency meetings, have their own special procedures you're going to have to follow when you're using those, and make sure you don't overuse these. And absolutely don't use them for the approval of executive contracts or changes in compensation. That must happen in open session at your regular meetings. If you notice that you're having lots of special meetings, it's time to take a step back and say, "What's going on with, we're managing our time, predicting our needs, advancing the work of the district?" Because that's, that would be a sign that things are not going as well as they should, and it's starting to implicate transparency issues. Okay? So there are three kinds of meetings, regular, special, and emergency. Regular meetings are the ones that are held at a time and place that are specified by your bylaws and rules, like every third Tuesday. They occur at a regularly-scheduled time. The agendas must be posted at least 72 hours prior where it is accessible to the public. And the agenda encompasses the notice of when and where the meeting will be held. Now, one of the things that can happen, one of your opportunities for agility is there are certain limited situations where you may take up a matter at a regular meeting even though it's not on the agenda. Now, this is called an emergency where there is need for immediate action. And here are the procedures for this. Number one, the emergency must be declared by a majority of the board. So, there are two steps to the process of taking up an item that's not on the agenda. First is you all have to agree that the conditions exist to do it, and then you may act on the item. Now importantly, the need for immediate action must be declared by two-thirds of the board or a unanimous vote if it's less, if less than two-thirds of the board are present, on both the need to take immediate action and that such need came to the attention of the district subsequent to posting the agenda. Now that point, the district is very important. What this means is, the emergency safety valve is not available to you to correct a mistake. So the district received the guidelines for applying for a grant with a deadline of, what's today? January 7th? A deadline of February 1. The district had it, it was on somebody's desk, it is something that needed to come to the board for approval, for, I'm just making this up to make my point. And somebody goes, "Oh, shoot! The meeting's in three hours, I completely forgot to put this on the agenda." That's not an emergency, because the district knew about it. So the emergency is only there if the conditions that created the emergency arose after you posted the agenda. Not a mistake. I'll also note, another, another way you can manage these situations is, for the most part, I think this really only comes up not where the need to act, you know, comes to light at less than 72 hours before, but less than 24 hours before. Because if I realize at hour 48 that I forgot to put it on the agenda, what can I do? I can attach a special meeting to the regular meeting on 24-hour notice. So you can have, look, I'm going to have all of my trustees there anyway, so I can create a special meeting, start a half hour earlier, post it on 24-hour notice. So that's the other way you can manage these, "Oh, shoot, I should have gotten this on the agenda." But if it's less than 24 hours before the meeting, you're just going to be stuck. I don't see how you can, you're not going to be able to fix it if it's a matter of a mistake rather than a true emergency. So that's agility opportunity number one is those sorts of situations. Now, the other way that you can work between meetings is, is you may also, without, without agendizing, is you have an item that's on a regular agenda, you are permitted to postpone it to a next, to another meeting as long as it's within five calendar days of the regular meeting. So that is another way that you can handle, so you realize you need some additional information, but you really need to act before the next board meeting. This cannot wait until the middle of February. So we're going to table this, we're going to come back to this in three days. You may do that for that specific item without it being a special meeting. And you don't have to have general public comment, you're just there to deal with that one issue. Okay? Now, special meetings, as I just suggested, those must be posted on 24-hour notice, they must be otherwise posted in the same way as regular meetings, accessible to the public, you know, on your website, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I think that in addition to dealing with those emergency things that we haven't thought of, I got a call from a chancellor this morning over the need to hire an interim, they need that interim in place immediately, and the next board meeting isn't for another two weeks, what should we do? Now, we actually decided, he has the authority to appoint the interim and they can ratify the contract at the next meeting, but otherwise, we would have held a special meeting. 24-hour notice, you'll get in there, we'll get this done, we'll get you the people you need. Right? That's kind of one of the things that a special meeting is for. Districts are complicated places. Things come up where college presidents need to act, but they need board approval to do, to take action, and so they call a special meeting. Or on something that's time-sensitive. But the other thing you can do is use them to avoid clogging up your regular meetings with things that are time-consuming, like a study session. So, you could have a meeting that was completely devoted to, when you do your board evaluation, you will probably do it during a retreat. you will probably do it during a retreat. It's an open session, but it will be a special meeting of the board, rather than have the public sit through. And that's also, going back to trustee Baldini's question about fatigue. I have, I do, it's training time of year, and, you know, I was just out at a district where they went through their full agenda, and then at about nine o'clock, they're like, we're now going to have our two-hour ethics training. And I get up, and it's tough. It's tough to talk about ethics for two hours, starting at 9:30 at night. So, and that's going to be a decision for you, about which is more fatiguing, having to come in for another meeting, or attaching a long study session or a training to what is already a full agenda. And that will be, again, a discussion you have as trustees, as you manage your time. Also, there are certain items that you know are, that are going to be very long. There's certain statutory times where you have to hold public hearings. That may be, that may be long. You may decide to devote a special meeting to that, rather than try to manage that type of an item during a, during a regular session. So that's another reason you might use special meetings, to build your own efficiency and manage your time. Emergency meetings are different. Emergency meetings are on one-hour telephone notice to the media, unless it's a dire emergency, that's even worse than a regular emergency, in which case you can, you don't even have to provide that notice. An emergency is a work stoppage, some other crippling activity that impairs public health or safety. You lose all your water and electricity, all your plumbing bursts, and, you know, those sorts of things that can happen. Those might be an emergency where you would excuse your employees. Dire emergencies are like what you faced. A natural disaster. A terrorist act, or peril so immediate that one-hour notice may endanger public health and/or safety. So when you were considering how to become a shelter, and you were facing wildfires, that was, that was an emergency that you handled really, really well, actually. So what happens in those situations? Upon convening, you have to declare the emergency by a majority of the full board. If you wish to go into closed session, it must be by a two-thirds vote, or unanimous of less than two-thirds are there. And then you post your minutes for the next 10 days. Of course, only if you're open session. If you've gone into closed session, there are no minutes to post. And then, the use of committees, and this is my last slide, look at that, I'm going to hit my time, six o'clock. So, I think committees are a really effective way for boards to build in some useful agility in advancing the work of the district in between meetings in ways that don't violate the technical requirements or the spirit of the Brown Act. What does it allow you to do? Evaluate data that relates to board work, complex data that maybe you want to delegate to two or three trustees to digest and bring something back to the full board. Rather than, and also, that also goes to issues of fatigue, right? Maybe there are ways we can delegate and create different areas of expertise on the board, so that not everyone is having to master all of the information, but can help filter for some trustees on various issues. Prepare recommendations for the full board. Here are some of the examples where I see committees being useful to boards. Interview firms to assist with the CEO search, and make recommendations to the full board. I once arrived at a closed, at a district to attend closed session, and as I'm walking in, someone else starts to walk in that I don't recognize. And I go, hi, I don't think we've met, who are you? And we said, oh, we're one of the search firms interviewing with the district, we're going to be helping, we're interviewing to help the district find its new CEO. And I said, you can't do that in closed session. Right? They're not employees. Right? So if you're picking a vendor, either you delegate it to an ad hoc committee to do the interviews and come back, they're not making the decision, they come back and make a recommendation, or you're doing it in an open session. I have worked for districts where the entire board wants to be involved in the decision on legal counsel, and I've sat in that chair, not here, but I've sat here, and been interviewed by the full board in open session. But it's not a closed session exception to pick your lawyer, or your architect, or your search firm. So what do you do in that situation? And it also is burdening the whole board. Trust each other to filter information and create recommendations to bring back to full board, so that you're not all having to be involved in every single decision. Boards where every single trustee feels that they have to be involved in every decision is a signal to me that the trust level isn't where I would want it to be for the board. Developing a draft CEO evaluation to bring back to a full board can also be done by an ad hoc committee. The initial review of concerns or complaints against an individual trustee are already identified. How we utilize an ad hoc committee in order to help keep the matter more respectful and private with the individual trustee before we, you know, have to, you know, go public with it in a public meeting. So you can use any kind of committee to do this work, either standing or ad hoc. But only your ad hoc committees can do the work without being subject to the Brown Act. As soon as a committee is subject to the Brown Act, it has to post its agendas, it has to do its meetings in front of the public, et cetera. So what's the difference? An ad hoc committee has to have the, all of these attributes, this is a conjunctive list. It has to be advisory-only. If you charge a committee with actually being able to take an action, it's not ad hoc anymore. Two, it's composed only of your trustees. If you have a blended committee, a search committee that includes trustees and other members of the college community, it's not an ad hoc committee. It must, of course, be less than a quorum. It may not be a standing committee. A committee that you create that has ongoing jurisdiction is a standing committee, even if it doesn't meet on a regular schedule. Right? So I have a district that has a committee, a facilities committee, it almost never meets. And then when it does meet, it's meeting out at some college site to look at a facility and decide what should be done with it. And I got the question, is this a standing committee? And I said, yep. You're going to have to post the agenda for the meeting, you're going to have to say, where are you meeting? We're meeting in the science building over at the college. And anyone who wants to come and do the tour gets to do it with you. Because it's a standing committee, because it has ongoing jurisdiction created formally by the board, or if it has, and it can't have a fixed schedule. So any committee that meets every third Tuesday is also going to be a committee subject to the Brown Act. But ad hoc committees are often created that don't meet any of these criteria, and therefore can meet without posting, and can help process data, create recommendations for the board, filter information in between meetings, help board members feel well-prepared without having to do, you know, those are ways that I think you can really use, effectively use committees, and vest in your board president the authority to appoint these committees. How are they created? Standing committees are created by formal action of the board. Ad hoc committees, I think, can be created by your board chair or your board president. Call up a couple of trustees and say, can you do this? That's it. Trust your, allow your president to do that. You as a group could also suggest an ad hoc committee, but I think that the board chair can do that. The committee members' appointment is also going to be by board chair, and there's a reference to your board policy on the general authorities of your board president and your other officers. And then, what's reportable? Where the action to create or appoint the board is made by the board. That's a formal action. We decide we are going to create a standing facilities committee, a standing budget committee. That's a formal action. I don't think it rises to the level of a final action that has to be reported out. But here's another, the reason I say that is, the Brown Act is a floor and not a ceiling. There are many things that you, I've helped board presidents create language to report things out of closed session, that the Brown Act doesn't say you have to report, but the board wants to report. We want the public to know we created a budget committee. We want the public to know that we care about X, and we've created a committee to look into such and such. We want them to know. So the Brown Act doesn't prohibit you from disclosing unless there's a competing privacy interest. Right? But I don't think it's a final formal action that would require reporting out. And certainly, the creation of an ad hoc committee is not a reportable act that you would have to report out, either. It is six o'clock. Any questions? Any final things? Any parting thoughts? Lovely to see you, happy new year.
All right. So we are going to move on to closed session, but, let's see, I'm going to open it for public comment, which I don't have any cards, and I don't know if anything on closed session. So at this time, the board will devote up to a total of 15 minutes for comments to the board of trustees regarding closed session agenda items. Individuals will be limited to a five-minute presentation. I don't have any public speaker, so I'm going to... We are going to be discussing conference with labor negotiators and public employee evaluation.
That was nice. That's good stuff.
I'm putting my rain boots back on, just pretend you don't see me, my silly rain boots. They're not very lawyer-like.
Hello.
We're tired.
There's some nuances there. Is it cold out?
It's cold out here.
Is it?
It's nice. It's pretty cool.
Now, getting a little bit...
Of course.
My...
Yes, it's just...